I did at that time that culverts were to be installed in lieu of not having a sewer system and that property owners were responsible to tie in between the property, personal property, and the roadway. So along the frontage of my property, there's a culvert. The first image as page one is a side profile of my culvert pipe. And the issue that I've been having now for approximately the past five years or so is that there is a rise in the apron and I have a paver finish that was accepted by the town. All property owners at the time had to submit a thousand dollar bond. Once it was surfaced, the town came out, inspected, and released the bond. So it was accepted as a finished product at that time. I maintain, as well as my other neighbors have maintained, the apron that ties between an interior sidewalk. You can see that in photo number one to the far right. The issue of the pavers back was brought to the town's attention back in October of 2020. I had sent an email communication to the then director of Public Works, Mr. Kavanaugh, on October 27th of 2020 to inquire about a job that had just been completed across the way from me at one of my neighbor's properties who had a similar situation. However, his culvert pipe was covered with asphalt. It was my understanding at the time, speaking with my neighbor at that time, that the issue had to do with a culvert pipe that had separated. This was a Friday, Monday job. On Friday afternoon, a crew was sent out. They made partial repair to the culvert pipe. My neighbor was unhappy about the type of pipe that was going to be installed or rejoined, per se. And the final product was a pipe of a different material. I'll describe it as a corrugated plastic versus the concrete pipe and of a smaller diameter. It was then finished with greater fill on it because you have a smaller diameter pipe and black topped on as well. So I brought this off the attention of Mr. Kavanaugh at the time. I was curious as to why one neighbor's property would be addressed, and I had a similar complaint, and I was not receiving the attention that I thought that I would deserve to receive. In response from Mr. Kavanaugh on the same day, I received a simple thank you for your correspondence, and that I was incorrect that the driveway culverts being on a private property, that according to the record as built on file here in this office, they are in within the right of way. So that again is a statement of fact here is that the culverts are to be maintained by the town, is responsibility of the town. I have no other way to access my property without driving over the apron. I wrote back that he had not addressed my request, and I requested a date for a meeting to which he did assign Mr. Bunovic, this town engineer, to come out and for an onsite meeting, which occurred approximately 30 days later. On October 30th of 2020, when I met with Mr. Bunovic, it was brought to my attention that he had no prior knowledge of this culvert improvement across the way from me. He was not involved with the project when I questioned then director. I was asked, why was it of interest to me and quote unquote, what is the issue with your neighbor? Which led then to a series of FOI requests for time materials as built, inspection of town engineer reports and employees involved in the job. And thank you to Mr. Bunovic. Again, it was stated that he was not involved in the project across the way from me. If I could bring to your attention, please, to page number two of the handout. This is my immediate neighborhood. It's on Bayview Circle, which is the top of the hill within Guernsey Town Farms Estate. Here's another property owner who has a circular driveway, and you can see both aprons. You can see the shift of the pavers there, which is a culvert pipe which has come up, I assume, over the many years of winters, hard freezes. And when I brought this to the attention of the director of Public Works as well as the supervisor of highways, it was presented as though this was a compression issue, had nothing at all to do with the pavers, per se. It was a lack of the proper compression of the submaterial. But then again, if a pipe raises due to frost, that submaterial has to shift somewhere. So I'll bring you to page number three. Here's another property within our development, and if the story holds true that it's all about pavers, then why is it also true about the asphalt on it, right? So it's not just about compression issue, because I don't believe it was a compression issue for the property here, which is listed on page number three. And then we get to the final photo, which I have at this time, which is number four. This is the property across the way from me. And maybe coincidence or not, but it was addressed. It was not presented as being a lack of funding issue, and so happened that the previous owner did work for Department of Public Works. So that raised some concern to questions on my part, which will lead to a series of FOIs. So that being said, the circumstance that I'm faced with right now is both a private and a public nuisance. It's a private nuisance because it affects me as an individual and a definite number of persons, my household here, for enjoyment of my property to begin with. It's a public nuisance as well, too. Public nuisances, there are many types. It's not a nuisance, per se. It wasn't designed by the engineers to say, five, 10 years down the road, this is going to cause a problem for the property owner. It's not, but it is a nuisance per accident, which is a nuisance in fact. It's become a nuisance by reason of circumstances. And the reason of circumstances is because this was improper engineering. I'm not an engineer. I'm the chief financial officer, and I've worked for municipalities for the past 27 years, but I'm not an engineer. But it's my belief that it's because of reason of the circumstance that it's now a nuisance by fault, which has created a danger or inflicts injury, not only on a person, but also on property. So the town of Watertown, approximately a month, two months ago, had sent out a private contractor to shave down an area of our interior sidewalk that was probably up maybe a quarter of an inch, three eighths of an inch. Fails in comparison now to the dip that I have on my driveway apron to your interior sidewalk. And just yesterday, I'm out there with a snow blower, and guess what happens? You're snow blowing there, you keep hitting the sidewalk. The sidewalk is now chipped as well, too. You can't clear the snow completely off of the crown of the pavers as well, too. So I brought this to alter the attention recently, once again, to the first selectman or the town manager, excuse me, and also to the public director, Department of Public Works director, who has been nothing but accommodating, and I appreciate his time. That being said, it's now a matter of what I believe is funding, and the funding source can come in different forms. You have LoCIP monies, but a decision was made by the town to assign your LoCIP funds to paving programs. You've had the ARPA funds, ARPA has exhausted. Those will always also put it towards the paving programs, perhaps some sidewalk work. So basically, we're supplanting at the local level here by making use of state and federal one-time offsets. As far as appropriation requests, I have not heard now, it's been three years that I've been complaining to the town, one single incident is here where there's been a request for a special appropriation. Again, I do this day in, day out. I've been doing it for 27 years for City of Waterbury, City of Danbury, City of Norwalk, and now the town of Westport. So I understand the finances behind it. So there could be an appropriation request. It could be part of bonding on it. I believe later this evening, you're going to hear a presentation on the upcoming fiscal year '25 budget as well as a SIP plan. I took a look at preview of the notes on the five-year SIP plan, just mentioned in there of culverts, and I thank you for including it in your forecast for the next five years at an average cost of $800,000 per year, times five is $4 million. However, at the same time, there's a suggestion to start it at $250,000. So if we know that there's $800,000 on average per year, for the next five years, it's $4 million. I just can't accept or understand the reason for the rationale behind, well, let's start off with $250,000. You're either taking your five-year and you're stretching it out to seven or eight years, or you're not addressing all of the priority needs. Also, in the presentation, more likely you'll hear about worst and easiest project. That could be subjective. And the reason I say it could be subjective, to me, it's subjective because the driveway, I'm sorry, the sidewalk lip that was recently shaved down about a quarter inch to three eighths of an inch on it, that had to be subjective. That was presented as being a safety concern. We have many walkers through our neighborhoods, a safety concern. I can understand, I can appreciate that as well. But in terms of the public nuisance here, it's not only a public nuisance to me and my family, but it's also for visitors. We have deliveries almost daily to my house, and you have to drive over this hump. And again, during the winter season, it freezes over. So it's not a permanent nuisance, and there is a remedy. And that remedy here is that the town ought to really look at the properties in town, which I'm told there's probably 40 properties here in town. It could take five, 10 years plus. Five, 10 years plus, a nuisance has to be addressed right away. To me, it's a safety, it's a safety issue, it's a safety concern. I don't think that this can be deferred or prolonged anymore. Again, I've been at this three years now with the town manager and the previous Department of Public Works, and it's only now, three years after fact, that it's being introduced as part of a five-year SIP plan. And again, there's no funding in place for it. Appreciate your time.
Jeri, do you have anything to add on to that?
Just, I know we have a lot of issues in town. I know most of my briefings in the talk about stormwater and drainage and paving. I know when we shaved the sidewalks, that was at 480 locations across the town, and it was anywhere from a quarter inch to two to three inches at those 480 locations across the town. And I did, you know, understanding I can't ask for $4 million, and I can't ask for $800,000. And it's the first discussion that we're having with drainage on this. I don't, it should be a part of the operating budget, but it also should be part of the larger capital budget in the future. When we go after paving, we should also go after drainage.
Well, I guess I have a couple of questions on this. Is that, first of all, who, is this something that the town installed, or is this something that a contractor that built the neighborhood installed? I'm having, forgive me, because I'm learning this myself right now, but
May I respond?
I'm having a hard time figuring out why you think that the town is responsible for this when it's clearly, by the look at the picture, it's well into your property.
No, and that's where, if we go back to the notes from Mr. Kavanaugh here, it's within the right of way that the town is responsible for
Do you have copies of that for us?
Not a copy of you, but I believe that the current director here will attest that it's town property.
Can you get me a copy of that or get the copy of that to them?
Of the email?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, but I think it's a simple matter of fact here. The question is, are culverts the responsibility of property owners or of the town?
It depends. We have privately owned culverts, and we have town-owned culverts. But usually off the curb line, there's a five to 10 to 20-foot difference. That's the right of way within the town. This is a unique case because of the subdivision was put in with these open channels where we don't really have it in any other part of the town. There's some subpockets. There's some more on Guernsey Town like this with these open ditches.
Yeah, so it begs the question
The town did not install this system. The contractor who built the neighborhood installed this system in there, and the town accepted it as part of the
Correct. The town, I'm sorry, the town accepted. So it begs the question of why did the town address without funding, any question whatsoever, my neighbor's property across the way? Where did that money come from? Why, it's just, right.
Yeah. Okay, we have this. Does anybody else have any questions?
Yes.
Go ahead, Herb.
Through the chair, Rob.
Yes.
Sir, you again are Mr.
Longo.
Longo.
Yes.
Mr. Longo, sir, you keep mentioning the safety issue factor. Can you tell me why this is such an extreme safety issue? This concerns.
Okay, so in comparing to the sidewalk, which the town thought it was of a top priority safety issue, right, over 400 linear feet was shaved, to a quarter inch or three eighths, I have a dip that exceeds that. So if the sidewalk is a safety issue, why is it not a safety issue for me and others as well, too? Driving over this crown always presents a safety issue. The ice builds up during the winter months there, too, because you can never clear it properly, whether you're out there, unless you're going to be out there shoveling by hand and broom sweeping it. It's never going to clear property there. It's a safety issue, too, while you're out there with a plow. A plow now, a plow hits the interior sidewalk, is beginning to chip away at the sidewalk. You run a snow blower along the pathway there, same with the snow blower. Either you have to raise the feet on the snow blower, which then you're leaving snow and ice behind, or you have to physically move the snow blower up and down in order to traverse over into the driveway.
Thank you, sir. And something else regarding this, sir. You have much that you've given us verbally, that a complaint was made to the town manager, the previous director of Public Works, to the current director of Public Works, who you have just mentioned seemed to try to solve the problem or discuss with you how to solve the problem. And do you have documentation that we could review that shows that the complaint was made from the time that you made the first complaint to the previous town manager and/or Mr. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
And then, do you have it documented?
Yeah, I have it documented. I have it well documented. I can send a copies of emails. I can send a copy of my FOI requests.
Yes, if you could get us copies of that, all that information, that would be great.
Thank you, sir.
Through the chair. I just want to make sure I understand this properly. I think I know where I am, but I drew little marks. That's where the problem is, and then up top where there's a about an inch or so difference in the pavers in the sidewalk, is that the safety issue?
Correct.
Okay. So these pavers, are these pavers even, this is, is this even your property?
Well, I've been told that it's a right of way.
But the pavers were put in by you. The pavers were put in by the original developer that did the driveway.
Yep. The homeowners, property owners were responsible to tie between the interior sidewalk and the roadway.
Right.
They were responsible, get a thousand dollar bond, released, inspected, reviewed, inspected. If it was found to be satisfactory, then the town released the bond.
So this photo?
Yes.
Where it's showing this bump, that's obvious, that's the other side of the street, correct?
That is up the hill from Bella Vista. So I'm on Bella Vista, that's at the top of the hill, which I believe that's Bayview Circle, part of Bayview Circle.
So the culvert is under this bump? This is the road?
Correct.
This is his driveway?
That's right. Yes.
So that side of the road has no sidewalk?
Has not sidewalk.
Okay, okay, that's why it looks so different to me.
Yes.
And then, this one I think is, this is on the side of the road that has no sidewalk?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yes.
Through the chair. Did I understand you correctly when you said the driveway that has been fixed, the owner worked for the Department of Public Works, the Watertown?
That is my understanding, yes. He worked for Department of Public Works.
At the time that it was fixed?
Yes.
Okay.
Through the chair. How long ago was that?
That was October, it was on a weekend, it was a Friday, Monday job, October 23rd and October 26th of 2020.
2020.
Little over three years ago.
Okay.
And my first communication with Mr. Kavanaugh was on October 27th of 2020.
Is, through the chair. Is he still an employee?
No. Yes, he sold a house.
Okay.
The fore sale sign went up soon after the fix.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Anybody else have any questions? We'll look into it. If you could provide the information to Oh, I'm sorry. If you could provide the information to the, to the office, that would be great, and they'll make sure that we get this, and we'll look into it a little bit more.
Will do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a procedural question. Later this evening for your new agenda items, does the public have, can the public have input or respond or?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Procedural question. On the agenda, you have new items.
Yes.
You have the budget and you have the SIP plan. Is there public participation or not?
No, public participation's in the beginning.
Just at the beginning?
Correct.
Okay, so public cannot respond to any of the items?
Correct.
All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else from the public? Okay. Let's close under that and go into minutes. Can I get a motion to accept the minutes of September 11th?
I make the motion to accept the minutes of the September 11th meeting.
Just the corrected minutes.
The corrected minutes, yes, sir.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm going to abstain.
Okay, approval for a motion for the October 10th, regular minutes?
I make a motion to accept the regular minute meetings from the October 10th, 2023 meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
I'm going to abstain, Rob.
I abstain.
Okay. Correspondence?
That's always a hard topic for me because we're always corresponding with the public. The two primary topics are drainage and pavement. So I just, there's literally hundreds of phone calls and thousands of emails that come through, and at times, I don't know which ones to pick and choose. This was one of them. I asked Elio to come in, Mr. Longo, to help explain his case. So that's it for correspondence.
Okay, thank you. Old business.
So for old business, first of all, I'd like to, I always thank the team because they're the ones who are behind me from Highways Engineering Transfer Station and Water and Sewer. And basically, with this meeting, the last meeting I was at, I had less than a year, and now I have a year on the job, actually 14 months here for Watertown. And kind of, not necessarily an agenda item, but we do have some news. We lost Danielle from the engineering public works department. Her last day was on Thursday, but she was hired into Highways as an MEO clerk, so that's an equipment operator clerk. She does have her CDL, so it was one of the big requirements. So I would like to thank her for the time, which I think was about two years, in engineering. There is a job application that was advertised. I do have about 15 applicants that I have to get through for replacement. And I know Danielle cannot be replaced for the work that she did for us, but I do feel it makes us stronger as a department because we still have her as a backstop and especially to train the new employee that comes onboard. So, and also, if you look at many towns, and Bob, please back me up, there's not many towns out there that has the diversity within their highway department having a female. I know in Southbury, they don't, and they never had. I don't think we ever had a female on highways, Bob. So in the surrounding towns, I don't see it. I haven't really looked into Waterbury and what they have in their departments, so it's one of the first. Basically, her job is going to be half out in the field and half in the office. And especially all the invoices that come to Highways, they won't have to be done here. They could be done at Highways. I could see them on a system and get them approved. So Danielle, congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations. I know, hold on, I know you'll do great because you're also a volunteer fireman in town, too, correct?
Correct.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Maybe she could hold two or three titles like you do.
Getting into old business, I'm going to take it to try to move it along. So Hungerford Ave, the reconstruction, the drainage and base coat of paving is in. The final coat is going to be done in the spring when the plants reopen. So far, the drainage is working good. The basins are set a little bit higher in order for the final coat of pavement to come in. We also, with that job, we got the water line in on the side street that goes into the cul-de-sac. So it was a pretty intense job over the two years of getting that road in. Pavement management is the next topic. We're at a grade point of a 61. We increased it by two and a half percent points, and if we didn't do anything, we would have lost two percent points. So we increased our score by 4.5. So we're currently at 63.25 for the road surface rating. To get to 100, we need 45 million. Our goal is to get to the state's average, which is 72. We are currently, out of the $5 million bond, we received two and a half million, and we're going to receive the other two and a half million on July 1st. I'm pushing to see if I could receive it earlier so we don't run into paving problems in the November, December time period. It doesn't look like it could happen because of the way they allocated the bonding for the town. So on July 1st is the other two and a half million. We also had 1.5 million in ARPA funds that we expended for that. So this year, we did $4 million worth of work. So we have $4 million worth of haves, and we have $41 million worth of have-nots. And those are the ones that we're still receiving the phone calls on. I have some more in a briefing to give you some additional details and what we did. The Wilson Street Bridge, the bridge is open. It's open to traffic. The base coat is in, and in the spring, they're going to finish the sidewalks and also the final coat of paving. And there's some additional driveways that we have to work that was part of this project. Temporarily, we put in two stop signs for a total of three stop signs at the intersection. It was more to slow the traveling public down because we're not totally done. I'm not sure. I'm going to have to communicate with the police chief to see if we want to run it through the police commission to keep those stop signs in place permanently for the bridge. I do have some videos of the bridge under drainage to show you how good it's working. Guernsey Town, they're doing some limited work. I gave them the okay to continue to work. There was supposed to be a winter shutdown, but I'd rather get a lot of, as much work as we could get done so we could have it completed by next fall. This was 100% state-funded project, no town dollars to fix the sightline distance, especially coming out of West Street, which is going to be pushed up on the shelf because Guernsey Town is being pushed where we're doing all the blasting. The new drinking water pipes were installed to the two buildings, primarily the golf course, and there's a lot of heavy drainage work that's going on. We're looking at shutting the road down for about four weeks in order to put a hydrodynamic gross particle separator in the road. It's on the section that we're not working on now, and we're going to make sure we have a good communication plan to let all the residents know. Everybody will be able to get to their driveways, but you won't be able to cut through. Main Street, the big
Just stop you for a second?
Yep.
Is that microphone on?
It is, yeah.
Can you turn that one off? Feedback was killing me.
Yeah, I'll put it over there. I didn't know it was me. Main Street, we did select Main Street, we did select from Ty and Bond, the consultant. We're going to work with them on the scope. It was two firms, Weston and Sampson, Ty and Bond. They both did great jobs. I know Herm was on the selection committee, but Ty and Bond was a step above with their presentation and their experience, but also how they want to take care of Watertown. I kind of keep on itching towards the book, but I'll get to that in new business. Sidewalks and trip hazards, you heard about the half inch that we shaved down, and it was actually 480 locations across the town. So every trip hazard that could have been done by this process was completed. So, and you could see in any sidewalk that we have, you could see where it was shaved. It helps for tripping, but it also helps the handicap and wheelchairs or in walkers. I do have another part of the, we did a sidewalk study in new business that I'll bring up at that point in time. Steel Brook Greenway, it's under design. We had the public hearing. We actually have our monthly meeting tomorrow, and we're actually, I am a little bit delinquent in putting in the submission for reimbursement. We did put in the first one. I do have, they come in monthly bills. I have to put in for the second one, and it's actually 80% reimbursement that comes to the town. And then I have a third one that's coming in, so that's why it's important for me to focus on it this week to get the, get the funds back for Watertown. The Community Connectivity Grant The Community Connectivity Grant, we said deferred because we don't like to lose. But out of the sixty to seventy applicants in the town, they awarded eighteen of them. We were like number nineteen or twenty. They're gonna do another round this coming year. They're not asking for any more applicants. They're gonna go back by their current standing list, which will make us number one or two. So about nine months from now, we'll get the notice that we'll receive this grant. This one is specifically for the Saint John's Wall across the street from the mobile station.
I have a question on that. Is there anything that could be done prior to waiting that nine months? Is there something that we can do to, because that's just, that's delaying the project another nine months and it's gonna be two and a half years after that before we can get to the point where there's a shovel in the ground on the project?
We, I did ask for a debrief. It's what I learned on the federal government and the army side. So they told us what the, what our shortcomings were, which really weren't any. They're really split in fine hairs. But under that thought is really to hire a designer and do the preliminary design to thirty-five percent, which is a smaller amount of funds, of course, than going after the hundred percent design. Because that will get a lot of the ideas, the coordinations and the basics and what we want have to talk to the public on and also the adjacent property owners. So preliminary design would help us with that timeline. And I could add that to the budget or talk to the town manager with what we have assigned for Main Street right now to do that work.
Yeah, I don't know about you guys, but a lot of these projects are, you know, coming from business standpoint, the projects in town take a heck of a lot longer than, you know, if it was a private business, things like that. And I struggle with how long it takes. And I think I voiced that a couple of times in this committee that just seems like it takes forever. And I understand that it's a process, right? And that the process takes a long time to get state approvals and everything. But anything that we can do to speed some of these projects up and actually get them done or get the shovel in the ground to get them started, anything that we can do to push this forward, definitely I'd bring it to the town manager to help us move these along.
I will. And just to give an example, I think Guernsey Town and Wilson Street Bridge, they were up there for like five, ten, fifteen years. Both of them under the discussion, you know, part. Hopefully, the Saint John's Wall is not gonna be anywhere close to that. Having Ty and Bond on will be key. I'm not exactly sure if I wanna go to Ty and Bond. And it's, and all the, so some communities, the ones that actually, the eighteen of them, they did get funding from their town to at least start the designs. So they could say, we have a design. And they'll kinda call it shovel-ready, which it isn't shovel-ready until it goes on the bid, but at least they have the design done.
Right. Yeah, I guess I look at these projects, especially the Main Street projects. This committee has voiced on several occasions that this is really our priority because this is truly a safety concern. Main Street is a serious safety concern because we've had two fatalities on Main Street. And, you know, we've talked, we've had these plans, but we just, I'd like to see these projects move faster and get something done before somebody else gets hurt.
Yep.
Through the chair. Do we have, Chair, a timeframe on what, how long it's gonna take Ty and Bond to actually put this together?
There's other projects that we're trying to kinda take them in order. When I first came on board, I thought the issue was pavement. Now I know it's Main Street. And also, and you'll see from the videos, the other thing with life safety and property is drainage. We, with the holidays, we were discussing it. And the next step we have to do is meet with Ty and Bond and the DLT to come up with the actual scope of work on the corridor that is a couple of blocks above north of Route Six to French Street, but also doing some preliminary design in the Oakville section. So it's on me and the designer, Ty and Bond, to work that.
One more, one more question. There was probably, at least a year ago, there was a conceptual print that somebody put together that showed things like Hemingway Park Road becoming a one-way in from Main Street with a bunch of parking on the left. And it showed, it showed a bunch of nice changes to Main Street. Is that something, is Ty Bond gonna use that as a base for what they're doing?
Yeah, so that was the, it was RSA, but we also had like another SLR helped us with that.
I think that too, it was SLR that put this together, yeah.
It was a five or ten percent, which is some nice designs and pictures just to get our thought. That's gonna be one of the base documents that we're gonna use when we meet with Ty and Bond.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Just, I was fortunate enough to sit on the interviews of the two firms that were interviewed regarding doing the project. And I was fortunate enough to sit along with the director of public works and to be the town manager was there also. And Teigen and Bond were without a doubt the ones that sold me that they would complete the job to our satisfaction, our requests, properly and professionally. And I believe that, that those interviews were recorded, correct?
Yes.
They were. I believe-
No, they weren't recorded.
Audio?
No.
They weren't?
No.
I, if the interviews were be able to be viewed by the chair and other members of the subcommittee.
We had it in this room, but we didn't have audio visual going on.
They were above and beyond the ones that would try to complete it. And I believe the timeframe would've been within twenty twenty-six it would be done, which is two years hence.
Yeah, I would, I think, I would have to look at my notes just to make sure. And I keep on wanting to jump to the book because there is other things. So we have the RRFBs, the flash and beacons. We have the traffic light at Mobile. And we also have a short sidewalk that goes from Starbucks just up to Saint John's. We're trying to get that package out to bid. We are, have some friction with the DLT, especially with the mobile station and the traffic signals. We met with SLR and the DLT last week on that project. And after that, Paul is working on the design for Hemingway for the one-way in off of Main Street. And then it's, so it's not like, to me, it's, Saint John's Wall is not, we have other things in front of it that we have to get to before we get to Saint John's Wall. With the consultant onboard, we do have flexibility to accelerate, you know, allow this with the ten percent, thirty-five percent, you know, designs. And that's, so kinda how we, and I guess I'll touch it. Page twelve, where we start with Main Street. You could see page thirteen is the, is what we're looking at with the three projects. RRFBs, and that's a picture of them, traffic light at mobile station, sidewalk from Starbucks to the Saint John's Wall. The next one is the Hemingway Park, that's page fourteen, and then the Greenberg property. And then it's the larger project that we're talking about with Ty and Bond on page fifteen. And then on page sixteen, it's the Saint John's Wall reconstruction. Gary, do you have an updated copy?
I'm not sure if it's updated or not.
Yes, that's the one.
All right.
Also, the presentation by Ty and Bond was, they came out with the answers to our questions from the panel with a vision of the Saint John's Wall, if you wanna call it that, and also completing the project eventually with a vision all the way to the Waterbury line.
Correct.
The other firm did not. It was, the questions were answered by then, including the one-way of Hemingway Park Room, which keeps on being, seems to be a concern to us.
All right, anybody else have anything under old business?
Yeah. Through the chair there. Just getting back to Hungerford Avenue. I know it's like, I don't know if you wanted to have questions as you went along or at the end or whatever, but I just, you know, I know you had bids from like two hundred thousand up to like a million dollars or whatever it was. And I just, I know when, when the contractor came in, there was a lot of changes made, you know, design changes made. Like you said, you know, they eliminated some catch basins. And I know they, some bases are like real, real deep, they brought them up higher. I just didn't know, when there's so many changes like that, if it's, you know, if it's something like that should go back out to bid again or not?
No, just with the spread of the bids and also the most expensive bidders, we wouldn't have gotten the road paved this year if we didn't value engineer the project.
Yeah, I just, I was just surprised, and any of the other contractors didn't do the same thing, you know. It seems like after he got the job, they went in and made all these changes, like brought it down to a hundred thousand.
My goal was to at least get the road, the sub-basin and the drainage in before this winter because we would've went another. And it's also, we really have to think if we have a road without drainage, that if we wanna put drainage in, it's double to triple the cost. And we have, probably half of our infrastructure doesn't have drainage. You know, it's, and I was the one leading the value engineer with the low bidder. Because I didn't know if I started with another bidder. I wasn't gonna start with a guy that was at one point one million.
Right, yeah, I said, no, I mean, it was nice, I just didn't know. I mean, it was good we got a low bidder, but I just, after he gets the job, then they make a lot of changes. I didn't know if that was sort of like, you know, if another contractor would come in and say, well, I could've done that too or something like that, you know, made changes. That's why I just, I just didn't know if it was the right way of doing things or not, you know. That's all I had.
Anybody else have anything under old business? Okay, new business. We are looking for approval to the schedule, correct?
That's correct. This page right here?
I make a motion that the meeting dates for 2024 is listed, be approved by us Monday, January eighth, 2024. All the rest also 2024, February twelfth, April eighth, May thirteenth, June tenth, August twelfth, September ninth, October fifteenth, and November twelfth. These are for regularly scheduled meetings, not special meetings as needed possibly.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
And for next year, on the last meeting, November twelfth, I hope to have a slate of meetings for 2025. So we don't have to have a special meeting like tonight, even though it was scheduled, but we didn't vote on it.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm gonna, the next part is I'm gonna put up the slides for, to touch on the bigger picture for fiscal year 2025. I will get into the details at the next meeting that is scheduled for February twelfth. And this is the operating budget, and it kinda goes hand in hand with C, the CIP book that you have in front of you. So just our mission statement from, and I think I have the controls there. And you could see that, you know, taking care of the residents, businesses, and visitors, quality, efficiency, and responsive services. But to me, it's key to maintain and improve the Watertown's infrastructure. I'm not sure if I'll get to the number on how much infrastructure we have. I would assume it's around a billion dollars worth of infrastructure that we have laid in across the town. And I don't wanna spend a quarter million dollars to find out. It's, yeah, it's only nine hundred million or one point one. We are lacking in our infrastructure and the repairs. It hasn't happened this year or the past year. It's just been decades going on. And we're kinda like normal with all the other towns that are around us. I use the American Society of Civil Engineers a report card showing you America's infrastructure is failing. I think some of the pluses, we have got great bridges, especially with the Wilson Street Bridge being done. But as you know, our roads are in poor shape. We'll use some corny jokes along the way. I know not to leave my full-time job and I can't be a comedian. And I have a few more coming up. So when I first came on board, I thought it was just gonna be all about pavement management. And then nobody really had a playbook to show me. So I started to understand this about six months ago. Main Street, you know, I, you know, I didn't, twelve months ago, I thought we're just doing paving. And now I know it's paving in Main Street. And the new thing that I wanna touch on is stormwater drainage, and I have some videos that are here. The other efficiency improvement is, and the big one that you helped us out with is we do have the third foreman in place. So we have three teams out in the road each and every day with that leadership. But we wanna train them, we wanna make sure they're safe. We wanna make sure we have the right equipment and the right vehicles. And then you could see the software improvements basically coming out of town hall here on payroll budget work orders that we have. To give you, this is a snapshot I get at the end of the month. This is our work order system. And you could see Public Works by far has the predominant amount of work orders in the system. The math doesn't add up to me because what I wish they did is what was open before this date on December first, which would be over on the left, because you see we closed more than they were open. But that was work orders throughout the summer and fall that we have. I still have a concern because we're supposed to go live with the system with the public. Currently, right now, we take it by telephone calls and emails. And I think we're gonna be totally overwhelmed with the work orders that come in, which is all right. But our goal is to improve the infrastructure. So there wouldn't have been really a work order in to remove the sediment load underneath the Pearl Harbor Bridge, but that took three weeks. We could've probably done thirty smaller work orders for the most important part of a hundred and forty miles of road is the two to three hundred feet in front of your house. So that is just a concern that I have when we do go live. Because it's not only a hundred and forty miles of road, it's two hundred and eighty miles of curb. And you heard that bad joke, it's, you know, the two to three hundred feet in front of your house. The other thing I'm getting help from the town manager and the IT department is we need to get tablets in our foreman's hands. So we're not doing, we still do the paperwork shuffle with the work orders. Also, a tablet in the vac truck and a tablet in the pothole team. So we could actually close the work orders when we get done instead of it sitting around because it's just the nature of the beast because you're just jumping from emergency to emergency with that. So I just kinda wanted to show you a little bit about what we're working on with Q Alert. I know the engineering department, I think that might be the second one, but it's not listed. I know Paul and I take specific ones on and we try to solve with the residents, like with Elio. with Elio. This is, we looked at some historical budgets. So in 1983, we looked at the yearly digest from the book, and we also looked at the logbooks of the daily reports from highways. So in 83, we were 5.7% of the budget, and we had 32 full-timers in highways. Currently, right now, we're 3.7% of the budget. Thank you for last year, for the additional 600,000, because we would have been 3.1%. And we're currently at 21 full-timers. So over the past two decades, three decades, 30, 25 years, 25 to 30 years, we lost 11 full-timers in highways. So what I would always ask and bounce off of Bob, and when I was in software, are we designed for winter, or are we designed for summer? And I know for Watertown, we're definitely designed for winter. The team did a great job yesterday over the weekend in taking care of the snow. But we're not designed for summer to take care of the amount of infrastructure work that we have in the town. I don't expect 11 full-timers, maybe a couple, but also working with contractors, because you can't go all contractors. I seen it happen, and like Stanford fell apart when they went to all contractors, there's no vested interest, it's all about the profit, where we have town employees that live in town and, and care about the, the town. So, and I know part of the drop was when we went from two per truck to one per truck in the 80s, was part of the drop. Oh, we don't need all these, you know, we don't need these people, you know, hanging out. But they're more needed now for summer infrastructure work, and I'm given the Heisman to allow the new projects that come up. It's great, we did a dog park, but that was probably 50 to 100 to 200 work orders that we could have got done and maintain, or just maintain the infrastructure where folks don't even know where we're at. And at this point in time, highways doesn't take vacations for five months. So they will not have a vacation until April, because they're here for each and every storm, because there's not enough personnel to take vacations. Somebody's sick, we got it. Somebody needs one day, we got it. But they can't plan a cruise, or go into Walt Disney, or go skiing with their families during, during the winter. The additional part of the infrastructure since 1984 is we have 27 more miles of road, dozens plus additional detention basins, thousand plus catch basins, increased regulations, increased liability and litigation, and increased intensity of storms. So I know it's, it's kind of like, this is the tough news to, but I also would like to let you know if we, it's also expectation management that we can't get everything done that, that comes in, into the office. But it's hard with that resident, because it's the most two to three, most important parts in front of us house, you know, from, from what we have.
To the chair, got a question? I remember way back when, they used to have government programs for, for summer help. They used to bring in part-timers. Do they still have that offered? I can't remember the names of the program. It wasn't HUD, but it was...
SEVA.
Who?
SEVA.
SEVA might have been one of them.
I think it was the Employee Training Act up with back in the 70s.
Yeah, that's when I was around, so yeah, probably, I thought it was called, it was something else, but they, they used to bring in people like a half a dozen or so. I don't know if they were...
I know those programs aren't, they're not there from, from the state or federal government. So, you know, if it was out there, we would definitely go after it. We know we want additional seasonals, because they're the best bang for the buck. But we also, you know, if I get a full-timer or two, because you could see the difference in the shop now that we're hiring and getting back to where we were two to three years ago, because during the, during the shuffle of public works directors, where we were actually short an employee or two from what we were authorized within it. And the first thing that gets cut each and every summer day is the vac truck, the most expensive piece of equipment, because we got to fill a crew. So we got two guys in the vac truck, so it's sitting there, because we're filling in potholes. Where if we had that extra guy or two, that, or a girl...
Yeah.
We could be keeping the vac truck out there and taking care of all the catch basins for stormwater drainage. I did look at police and fire from the 1983, they were 8%, and they're currently at 8%. I looked at Board of Ed, they were at 57%, and they're at 60% right now. But they got to get the school on our roads, so it's, I appreciate at least listening to this and kind of where we're at. And it didn't, like I said, it didn't happen this past year or two years, it's been happening since the 80s with, with, with 30 years. Moving on to pavement management again, and basically the, I, I get to the point, the ask is a $5 million bond, eight, every other year. And we get two and a half million dollar allotments. I'd like to get them on April 1st to start with the construction season, because you get to see from the study, it's 45 million, we did 4 million, so now it's, it's 41 million of half knots. So in order to save the time, this November, is the request is to have a $5 million bond, because we'll be good this year, but the following year, we won't be doing anything, because we'll have no bonding to continue the work on, on the roads.
Jared, how many years will it take you to get to the 72 where you want to be at?
I just got those metrics that Mike Zoller from our department worked in beta. So that's the next thing I, I want to take a look at, to see how many years at $5 million every other year, or two and a half million dollars a year, when we will get to 72. So we do know, without doing anything, we lose about two and a half to 3%. And with the 4 million we did, is we did about two, two and a half, they're points, not percent, for, for, for the grade. So at two and a half million a year, it's probably a million equals one point. Math in public. So just thinking out loud, we're probably seven to 10 years away to get, getting to 72, if we funded it. I'll get you a much better answer with those, with those metrics that we're looking at.
And how many years did you tell us that the, the chip seal, like, I'll take Nova Scotia Hill Road for example?
Chip seals for five to seven years.
That will, that will...
Extend the life.
Extend the life.
Yep. And then we would hope to chip seal the road again for another five to seven years. Chip seal is a 10th of the cost of mill and pave, so it's very cost-effective. A mill and pave road is going to give us 15 to 20 to 25 years.
I look at the traffic on Nova Scotia Hill Road versus the traffic on the green, right? There's two total different...
Yeah.
So I can see the green lasting five to seven years. I don't see Nova Scotia lasting five to seven years.
Nova Scotia was a tough road for us to do, especially at the speed of the traffic, and they wouldn't slow down when we, when we applied. We had to go back there a, a second and third time to, to work on it. But the next option would have been to pave it for 10 times the cost.
Right. Yeah, no, I get it.
And I just got a, a list today. I don't know if we add it on as a new agenda item, but I have a draft program for 2024. This might be a, a good time to add it, or at least I'll just give you a copy. We fully didn't staff it in this apartment, this is myself working with one of the staff of engineers. It just might actually be a month or two earlier than what you normally see. But this breaks out the, the two and a half million that we're going to receive. The roads to be chip sealed, the roads to be reclaimed, crack sealed, but crack seals pennies on the dollar. That's, that's nothing. And then a real great program that we did this year was with highways, and we shimskim a good section of the road. I could add this to the agenda for next month.
Yes, if you could.
Get you, you could take a look at it.
Yep.
And I could always think of another dozen or two dozen roads that...we do have bids on the roads to be reclaimed. We already have them in the office, and we just didn't have the funds to execute it this year. So I initially thought we were going to get all 5 million upfront, and then it was a realization about six or seven months ago that we only got two and a half million. So, yeah.
What would be the definition of a reclaimed road?
So it's actually, you're basically taking it all out, redoing the base and sub-basin, and then, and then paving the road. So you're reclaiming that road and then putting it back in. It's the next step. So that's a good point, and I'm glad you brought that up, is what you don't see on here is mill and pave, which is what we, but these roads are, have totally failed, and we have to go in and reclaim it. It's much more expensive than mill and pave.
To the chair, is that Hillcrest Avenue in Watertown or Oakville? Is that the one by Cavall's or is the one by...
Which one is this?
Under a chip seal?
Yeah, it's by Italian...
Or, or no, reclaimed, reclaimed, I mean, yeah.
Yeah. That's, that's the one by the deli.
Deli, okay.
Cavall's, yeah.
All right. And what do you mean, like, when you, is it chip sealed and then they fog it? Is it, what's fogging, I mean, after?
Yeah, fog is the, so it, it should say chip sealed and fog. Fog is the final coat that you see that really makes the road pop. It makes it black, and more importantly, it locks in all the, the stones that, that are out there. That's something a previous contractor didn't have in his portfolio was the fog, and I guess there's always stones in, in the curb and in, in the gutters. So I do have to add that part onto my sheet, it'll be chip sealed and fog. And you're right, I should put in no mill and pave. And then Bob and I will be working on the final part, which is the shim and skim, which we had success, so much success. The next slide up there, I wasn't, it wasn't a competition until I got the numbers together, but the highway crew actually put down more paving than all the contractors than we had in town. So then it became a competition, especially since we won, so. So, and you could see, basically, it's 100 bucks a ton, just in pure asphalt alone, it was, out of the 4 million, it was 1.5 million in just buying that product. And the paver is well outdated, we definitely have problems with it. I asked if I could take, buy a new paver out of two and a half million dollars of bonding, but I guess our ordinances don't allow that, unless I write it into the future bond for 5 million and call it out, we want a new paver for that. So we'll add this to the, the agenda for next month, and that's the sneak peek. This is just more of what I was talking about with metrics, that we started at 61. When I did this last week, I didn't have the numbers, I just got the numbers on Friday or, or, or this morning from beta, so I'll update this, this slide. The next item I want to talk about, and to, and to hit it quick, Bob, could you get me the, the stick that's in the, in the corner?
Or Danielle, you want to hold it?
It matches your shirt, too.
So, basically, this year, we received 69 inches of rain. The average is 49 inches. And this is a local rain gauge that's, there's two of them in Watertown. So this is at Bradley Airport. Bradley Airport was at like 65, and I think if you go further north in Litchfield County, they were in the 70s, like Norfolk. And this is a seven-year average, and that's how long that rain gauge has been operational. And then last year was 46, so we received 23 inches more of rain of this year than last year. I'm surprised we got anything coming for construction this year with this amount of rain. The other part, it's just not the amount of rain, but the intensity of the storms. Three weeks ago, we had the high winds in, in, in the rain. I'll go through quickly with some quick videos after this to, to show that. I'm not going to quit my full-time job, but our first name is water, our last name is town. Do you think we have any drainage problems in Watertown? Good for an industry 200 years ago, but this is what we, we deal with probably, and it also creates a lot of the potholes, because the water's pushing everything out that we have in the town. But Gary, I don't know if you've read the article, but I think it's not called a magic stick. Because it's in the title. So, and the next one is, what we're looking at doing is, all the things on the left, and the biggest one is detention basins, everything is, is big on there. Even if we take the four town-owned dams, and what if we lowered them a foot or two, but I know I'll get in trouble with the environmentalists and then on the wetlands to have storage for storms. But that one would have to be definitely a study. I do have a spreadsheet on this that does add up to 4 million dollars. Yes, if it's a five-year plan, Mr. Long goes right, then go ask for 800,000. But at least initially to start, was it to start with 250,000 dollars? And maybe just talking out loud, 50 to 100 in operating, and maybe the other in the bonding appropriation that we line up with the pavement management plan, a combination or, or separate. Yeah, and I talk about worse, because some of the worst things we work on could be very expensive. But that's where I also said, I'm surprised Mr. Long don't have this, this down. So it's kind of working both ends, working towards the, the, the middle. And, and the bottom right is, with some of the studies I get to help support me, is to go after federal and state rents, because you need a study to, to do that. And then also, the best thing we did last year was on the bottom left at Town Work Crews, is if I hire a contractor to cut all the trees out of like five to seven basins a year, detention basins, and then we rent a 60-foot stick excavator that highways works on, and that's where I think we really hit stride of working with the contractor and then working with our town work crews. But when we're renting that, we need to extend the workday from 2:30 to 5 o'clock, because we're paying a lot of money to rent a piece of equipment that we want to operate as many hours as, as we can while we have that specialty piece of equipment. And we've had it for three weeks or four weeks this year? Three weeks. So we just thought it was going to be Pearl Harbor Bridge, but then we were able to get five additional detention basins on, on top of that, without very limited planning. Now we know we want to plan ahead and some pre-work gravel entrance road, cutting the trees down before we get in there. So this is the, the drainage. And if you could put up the, the video part, and I'll, I'll keep this moving, I know I'm an hour and 13 minutes. But this was three weeks ago, basically... Basically, um, Bob and myself and the rest of the crew was on, and... That's us. So this is three weeks ago this morning, on Sunday night and Monday morning, we had four inches of rain with high winds. And I start Steel Brook, work my way down, and then I go to other areas in the town. So the good news is, is the Wilson Street Bridge is working great. The center column is not there anymore. The amount of water flow is, has increased, but more importantly, there'll be no blockages with trees up against that. So you can see we have enough clearance to pass additional flow. One of those at the, the top part of the bridge, the other one's back at the south part of the bridge. I also learned from what my kids told me, he said, "Dad, hold your phone in the other direction so that you get the whole stream." Now I know what we're talking about. This is, uh, Junico Bridge. What I was worried about was upstream. I thought there would be a higher head elevation than downstream. But with this high flow of four inches, it was about the same between.
Was Knight Street impacted by that storm?
No. It was somewhat limited, but not like it has.
We cleaned out the day before, or the Friday before, so it wasn't as impacted. And also too, I think, uh, a lot of the light material, the muck above that roasts the state road over, we talked, there's a lot of con action.
And that's a drill that highways does before the storm. As they go out into like a dozen focused areas that they have to go out and clean and maintain before the storm.
We'll be out tomorrow too for the same, for the other four, it's very common, plus eight inches of snow now.
So this is where the dam used to be, and where I wanna take out some rock. But what I'm worried about, and I can't pause it, is if I take the rock out, it's gonna aim it right towards sixty-three, and possibly undermine the...
Seventy.
Seventy-three. And it's gonna undermine the highway. So it's not like Bob and I go out there and get the rock out. It really needs to be studied to do it the right way. So on the first video, you'll see where the dam was at and where the rock is at. This is where the dam was at, right there. And if we can take this rock out right here, it's gonna help lower. I didn't know we had Class Four rapids in Watertown.
How was it coming down, like where Burger King was? That was pretty clear?
Great question. I do have that coming up. This, the next one after this.
Yeah.
So this is, um, the dry cleaners. Pretty dangerous with the block, because it gets narrower as it, as it rains. So, a hundred-and-fifty truckload of sediment.
Sediment was just below the bridge, right above where that water was.
That's how wild.
We would've lost the green.
So the green, the businesses, the dry cleaners would've flooded three to five times this year if, if we didn't. And this was right in the big stick, the extended workdays, plus we got to do the basics.
Now, the Pinchot Pond itself, when I was a kid, a long time ago, that was an actual massive pond, right? Now it seems like it's just a river that goes through there. Does that have anything to do with the water also backing up that it's no longer a pond?
It could take no additional sediment loads, it'll backs up underneath the bridges.
But that's private property, right?
Right. And I haven't wrapped my hands around that one yet, because, and then from what I understand is possibly there could be issues with that because there used to be factories that used to dump in right at the pinch.
Yeah.
So going to different areas, this is Ledgewood, Mr. Pluges, and his, on the right picture, his basement would always flood. You can see the catch basins coming out at Ledgewood are totally filled.
I could attest to that.
And there's water coming off of the winery. And his pipe was blocked, and you'll see Bob with a shovel clearing his pipe that helped him not from flooding his basement. He's in about once a month, Mr. Pluges.
Well, because Ledgewood Road, how they, when they moved the road, it used to be a road that was like thirty-five feet wide or something like that. And years ago, the town came and said, "The road's too wide, we're gonna narrow it." So they narrowed it, but they never moved the catch basins in. So now the water comes down the street and it goes so fast, it doesn't go into the catch basins. It goes, it goes around the catch basins, and then there's the ones at the very end that just get overloaded because water goes right by, past everything.
Also, Paul and I are working, another issue where we actually blocked a pipe up on Ledgewood. I'm still studying it, where we used to direct the water in a different direction is, is another issue that we have. This is, uh, this is good. I was just here.
West Street Bridge, working well, eighteen December, two thousand and eight.
This is Burger King. I call it the piano choir, the walkways. And, uh, this is what's coming off the hill. I think they could open up the grate more.
They had a problem for fifty years.
That, if we open up the grate more, and we do have kind of property above, we put a detention basin above, it's gonna help slow it down from, from the beginning. I love infrastructure, but it's just all takes a point.
That's, on the left, that's Chair.
Rain, eighteen December.
No, that's the back of Burger King.
Behind Burger King, to the left, behind, uh, behind that little strip mall.
Looks like the one on, where it comes from, from the pond up above.
Yeah, yeah.
No, it is definitely, definitely, so there's a nail salon, there's the piano, A and B.
H and R Block.
H and R Block, right there.
So Main Street did get flooded during that?
Right here.
Yeah.
So this is a detention basin across from Carvel, is working fine. Holds it back, slows it down, and then releases it. You're gonna have to forgive me with my music selection. I think most of you will like it. Especially on the two-left videos, there's music and the other one, there's not. So this is, uh, Beech App, next to Nova Scotia. And the picture on the right, there's no stream there. It's, it's actually a, a pipe that gets all overwhelmed. It's a private pipe. Uh, this home was owned by Dayton, Mr. Dayton, back in the day. And we assume he put the pipe in, and now it's not able to handle the flow of water. Is just what I was listening to. So this is a picture, I think that was in the news. This past Friday, we did provide some assistance to Mr. Holland, who lives there now. And we helped work on the inlet from him, so to reduce this amount of flow. We're also looking at the detention basin above, up on Pheasant Bridge in Mount Fair, that we have to get into and maintain. Nobody's been in there since Mount Fair was, was built. And to get that sediment load out, but we can't get it out because there's no access road, they're basically gonna pile up on the bank, or beyond the bank, because otherwise we'd be tearing up every place in my backyard.
Yeah, because there's ice on Pheasant Ridge now. There's the whole, the whole sidewalk and hard, the road is all iced up.
Right. This is, uh, we did lose one section of road. It was Bunker Hill near Staples. I have photographs of this. So this is Bunker Hill Extension on the left, and then, no, Davis Street Extension on the left, and Bunker Hill on, on the right. The one on the left, I don't think there's any catch bases or anything. And I'll show, play the video. So, this is what we found as soon as the water came back down. The road was undermined. And within the next day or two, highways jumped right on it and made the repair, lucky it didn't happen. So it's still, it's passable now. And we're working with Paul to go after beavers. Our partner's problem here, and where they block the pipes and overflow to the road. This is one of the areas that we cleaned, so we cleaned it the day before, and the beavers overnight, we walked it through the next, uh, there's about a half dozen places across town in that area. Lovely lane is the newest one that we have, with beavers that are blocking the pipe up on the beaver. So that, uh, is the pitch for drainage. And starting, you know, I guess, Mr. Longo, I should ask for eight-hundred thousand. But I'm looking at like two-hundred-and-fifty thousand just to start. We could face about six to twelve day issues a year, but we have like hundreds. So we gotta fix more. And you can see we're not racing down to the dry cleaners at the Pearl Harbor Bridge. I'm gonna take great photos, that is working. We've often went in there for five or ten years, but with the intensity and the amount, we've probably got two to three years worth of rain because of the intensity with the sediment load that was, that was dropped into that area. So we might have to be back in there in about three years to, to clean it out again. So that's the topic on Watertown.
So with the, with the rain, I guess it's coming in the eight inches of, of snow melt that we're, that we're having, um, do you expect conditions to be worse than what we just saw there?
I'm gonna prepare for conditions that are worse than that, yes. And, and in fact, we have had a little bit of frost in the ground.
Yeah.
So the ground, it's gonna soak in the ground.
Right, correct.
And they're actually looking at possibility of thunderstorms tomorrow, because it's gonna be so warm. So you're gonna have the warmth melting the snow, the rain melting the snow, and all the rain coming out of the sky, it's, it's gonna be a mess.
Do we, a- as the, the town, do we put notification out to the town residents that live in the, the prone areas that, um, that there's flooding potential? Like, do we do reverse nine-one-one calls to these areas or, or anything like that, that...
I don't think we have ever done that, but I don't have that much history here. It was something I'd have to talk to the emergency management director to see if we do, do that. I don't think we...
I guess Beach Road would be the, the biggest one for me, like, they should be thinking about moving out.
The people that are in the prone areas?
They know.
They know.
Yeah.
They know it was gonna be...
Yeah, because we don't have the problem at Ojo's anymore.
Right, that was, that was the problem that, uh, ordinary Joe's put in a, back on the back of the property, they actually tore the pipes, or the, the hose right through the pipe, and that was caused the block.
Through the chair.
Nobody bought it till a long time.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah.
Chair. Not from an engineering viewpoint, from a layman's viewpoint. You say a lot of these problems were done without forecasting for problems in the future by developers, like up Highgate, the condominiums back in the mid to late seventies. Evelyn Street we're looking at to reclaim it. That was done back in also seventy-nine and eighty, I believe. Mount Fair Farm, the big development went up, and now look what's going on down on Beech Avenue.
I, um, well, I, I do know, we do have probably a hundred detention basins in the town that we've done no maintenance. So every time they develop Mount Fair, they add it on. There's four or five detention basins in Mount Fair. And no, nobody took care of the, the, the maintenance. This is an average town. South Bay was the same way. It's, we have to get after, and I, I know Rachel asked me a year ago, "Well, you're gonna get all of them done this year?" And I was like, "I hope they get like five to seven done, done a year." So the areas that we worked on, you could see the, the improvement to, to that. You know, I'm not a big conspiracy theorist, but maybe there's something happening with the weather and with the increased rain. You know, I don't wanna ring that bell, but, and I wrote down on my notes too, is we gotta be more resilient in maintaining our infrastructure. Because every couple that we get done, it's like, we, we don't have to worry about that. We could focus, you know, on, on the rest. And the next thing, I, I wanna talk to the DLT, um, in, on, uh, Carvel area, and make sure that they understand it's flooding. You know, and, because really it's their fix. It's our fix with the waterfall, but with the property owner. But it's a DLT's issue to make sure that water's flowing through that intersection. And did we put those barrels out, Bob, or did the DLT put those barrels out?
We both.
Yeah. Because I kinda talked to District Four about it, and they kinda, they didn't necessarily know there was an issue, but Paul and I talked about it and said, "Of course they know about that, that issue."
Yeah.
So, you know, for that.
Which would mean from that area, Carvel, Walgreens there, as water flows, it flows downhill, Knight Street has always had problems in the past, uh, right down to the Pearl Harbor Bridge.
So, is there any other questions on drainage?
No.
I love it. This is my favorite topic in school, Paul and I, Q equals CIA. So, um, but I know I have one other topic, uh, well, one, if, it was kinda all part of the budget fiscal year eight B, and, and if I could move to eight C, I could take a quick time. So we plan to do this each and every year, uh, to make the update. It is the playbook. It starts with construction, then design, and then planning. I do have to thank Danielle, because basically it was Danielle and myself and help from the rest of the team, I'm getting it to this point. And, uh, basically, we wanna put it out during the budget cycle. In each year, we're gonna, it's easy once we have it done, because a project or two will come off, and a project or two will be added on to it. I'm not sure on distribution. Do I make twenty-two thousand copies for each resident? Probably not. But at least have it available online. And, and make a hundred copies, at least for all the different boards that we have. And if a resident requests a copy of it, you know, we, we could do that, that part, too.
Yeah. Chair, I think it would only be like six thousand.
Six thousand.
Yeah. You have twenty-two thousand...
You have twenty-two thousand people, but you only have like six thousand homes.
That's true, one per home.
So I, I think you should do it.
Six thousand. So that's the, the, the CIP, any comments or anything we missed or added on? Every time we look at it, we see something to make a correction.
As far as Millbury Road, are you all done with that?
For drainage work, not?
The drainage is, uh, Millbury Road, we do have to do the, uh, it'll be done in, in the spring.
Yeah, I guess, I saw all the, all the other catch basins and pipes still sitting up by Lake Winemog there. I don't know if it was for future work or not.
I'm not, I, I, in fact, I took a picture of that and I have to check on that myself, if we could actually remove them, uh, for that. So. The engineer that I have working on that, on that is, is not here tonight, so. And the final one, if I could move to eight D. So it's in your, it's in your handout? So we continued the pavement management program with the sidewalk. So all we did was more of getting rid of tripping hazards. Uh, but in the town, we have thirty-three miles of sidewalks. Seventeen miles are good, ten miles are fair, five to six miles are poor. We have twenty-four miles of concrete and nine miles of asphalt. The sticker shock is in order to repair them all, it's six point three million. But we have a study to go after state and federal grants, and some of the existing funding that we have, we get maybe a hundred thousand for sidewalks or two hundred thousand. Out of that, the, um, like a decision point, if we, with asphalt, patunus, do we stick with that or we go to concrete? It shows in the study that a concrete sidewalk lasts a, a, a lot longer for that. We're actually meeting with the contractor in the next day or two to understand, uh, the product, and we'll have questions and answers with them. So this is another part of our infra- infrastructure portfolio that at least we kinda know where we're at, um, for that. And that's it.
All right, anybody have any questions on their new business? Okay, transfers and appropriations.
Yeah, Mister Neil continues to call me. I know we talked about this multiple times. At one of the meetings, we talked about just paying, uh, the two thousand and eighteen, uh, bill. That was for, he currently is owed eighty-seven hundred for two thousand and eighteen, eight thousand, uh, for twenty-twenty. The first time I met him was a year ago. I asked him if all your invoices been submitted for past projects, I asked his of all contractors. And he said, I'll get back to me, and he found out he didn't submit his invoices underneath Roy. We researched all of our records upstairs in the attic, and we couldn't find that we paid him anything for the work that he did at the, uh, the cemetery. And I know I waffled back and forth, the first time I was pressing hard to pay him, the last time I wasn't. But he still did the work at the cemetery. And I do feel that he needs to be, because he hired a lot of subcontractors with heavy cranes to come in. You know, so I kinda like going back and forth, it's like, well, weren't you missing that money if you paid these contractors off? You know, uh, for that. And I know it's getting late, and maybe it's something, if you want me to put it on the next agenda item?
Well, I, I believe that there was a motion, um, and I wasn't at that meeting. I came in the following meeting, Ken, he came to our meeting. And I had a couple of questions for him and asked him to come back with some invoices, but I believe you guys voted not to pay the outstanding invoices because they were so old and he did not submit them.
That was, that was before he came to a meeting, cause I wasn't at the meeting that he came to either.
Okay.
So.
Let's move to Chair.
Yeah.
I believe at the meeting that he came to, our board made the motion, and it was agreed on, to pay him for the twenty-eighteen bill. But nothing subsequent after that, or pending after that, which was, he wanted interest and so forth. That his initial request, I believe was, how much was it, Chair?
It is kinda like the last thing I worked on, the agenda after, you know.
It was in the minutes, it would be definitely in the minutes.
Can you, can you put this all together and get all the facts?
A white paper with the facts.
White paper, bring it to us at the next meeting and then we can take a look at it.
Cause I don't remember it that way, the way that Herm is, but I, I, I could be wrong.
I can remember that.
We made a partial payment on the first invoice, which kinda, which kinda commits you to paying the balance of it, but the other invoice that we didn't pay, that's the one we said we're not gonna pay.
Yes.
But then he came with the purchase orders, and now you're saying you know the work was done because he hired the cranes.
Well, I know the work was done, it's not a question of the work was done or not, it's just a question that, why did he wait four years?
There were purchase orders from somebody at the Town of Watertown?
Yes.
Oh, we, you found all those purchase orders?
Yeah, he brought them in.
Okay.
Yeah, can you, can you do the white paper on that and then bring it to us and then?
Yeah.
Then, then we could make the decision at the next meeting, still decide what we're gonna do.
Do you remember who signed them?
No.
Yeah. That's all new to me, I missed a couple of meetings, so.
And I just, you know, he might add a purchase order number on it, and, uh, Danielle and I have discussed this many a times, but we probably haven't focused on it in the past like two, two to three months, so we'd have to go back to a lot of our notes. And unfortunately, it's just gonna take hours for someone, if he just got his bills in on time, that we, we would've, you know, got it done.
Timely filing. You won't be able to have an insurance claim.
Yeah.
They would've denied it just on that, so.
Very quickly on this, I can recall, and I believe Rachel can recall this, that the town manager was here at the meeting. You may or may not have been here at the meeting, and that we did agree by vote to pay him for what he wanted on the initial bill, but not the interest that he wanted in subsequent billings. And I believe it was.
I was in here.
No.
Yeah, I don't think I was here.
Chair, it could be.
Okay, well, again, if you do the white paper quickly for us and.
It was like two thousand dollars.
Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Goodnight, everyone.
Recording stopped.